I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM. It is Tuesday, December 10th, 2019. This is the Indian River County School Board Business Meeting. We are located at 6,500 57th Street, Vero Beach, Florida 32967. And I say that because we always invite the public that's watching on television to come and join us in our audience. We are located in the Joe N. Idlet Teacher Education Center. Tonight is a special meeting for us all here on the board. We have with us Dr. David Moore, who we approved his contract on November 26th, so we'd like to say welcome. The reason that our new superintendent is sitting over here to the side is because we have our interim superintendent that will be with us until December 19th midnight. And so, Dr. Moore is onboarding, and as he's onboarding, we still have Dr. Moxley, who is here taking care of the operations. But with that being said, let's go ahead and move into the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. This will be led by Vero Beach High School Air Force Junior ROTC Detachment 043, under the direction of Wade E. Deuce, Chief Master Sergeant Retired Aerospace United States Air Force, and Dean Razdahl Retired Major, United States Air Force.
Present the orders. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Present the orders. Vote. Forward. March.
If we could show our Vero Beach High School students our appreciation. They always do such a fantastic job, both Vero Beach High School and Sebastian's, so we really appreciate it when they come out on a Tuesday night, that's for sure. Okay, at this time, what we're gonna do is we are gonna have the adoptions of the orders of the day. Board members, are there any items that you wish to move from consent to action? No? Okay.
Mrs. Zork and members of the board, I don't wish to pull any item, but I do need to make one announcement regarding one of the items on the consent agenda before you vote. So, I'm not sure whether I need to do it now or before the consent agenda.
Either way works. You can go ahead.
Okay, right now. I just want to call your attention to letter R on the consent agenda. That is, the approval is recommended for memo of understandings with law enforcement. We have two instead of three. So tonight, you will be approving or asked to approve the Sheriff's Department Memo of Understanding and Sebastian Police Department, and Vero Beach will come at a later time.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Okay. So with, well, let's go ahead and adopt the orders of the day with no items being moved. I need a motion.
Move approval.
Second. Do you'd like to speak to your motion?
No ma'am.
No ma'am.
Any discussion?
No ma'am.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. Alright, so at this time, what we're gonna do is we're gonna move into our presentations, and I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Moxley.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Zork, and welcome to all of you in our audience tonight, and those that are viewing by our live stream. We want to welcome you here to our school board meeting. It's always a pleasure to see so many students in our audience. You're the reason we are here every single day, so thank you for doing what you're doing, and we applaud the accomplishments of our students. And so, part of our presentations is where we get to recognize a lot of the many wonderful things that are going on in our district. So I'm going to turn this over to Kristin Maddox, who is our Public Information Officer.
Thank you, Dr. Moxley. Thank you, board members. So tonight, we have a special holiday performance. Come on out, Citrus Stingers. This is a group. These young musicians are a group of fifth grade students at Citrus Elementary. They will be singing Jingle Bells with a Florida twist and Home for the Holidays. And we have two soloists tonight, Adriana Lester and James Holmes. They said they are so honored to be able to perform at the school board meeting and bring the holiday spirit to everyone, so please sit back and enjoy the Citrus Stingers. Don't leave yet. We're going to take a picture, but I just wanted to point out that Mr. Farnsworth is actually a fifth grade teacher at Citrus who took on the chorus. He's not the music teacher, but he's an accomplished musician, a college musician, and took this on as an extra hobby because you needed some more work to do, right? Yeah. So, our multi-talented teachers. Okay, let's get a good picture. Let's see. Oh, perfect. Alright, ready? One, two, and three. Perfect. Thank you, Citrus Stingers. And let's have another hand for those soloists. That takes a lot of guts. So we have two videos tonight, and we're going to play them back-to-back. These are videos recognizing our principal and our Assistant Principal of the Year. And our Principal of the Year is Tekeisha Harris from Liberty Magnet School, and our Assistant Principal of the Year is Christopher Cummings from Oslo Middle School. Now, we had the chance about a few weeks ago to go out and surprise them at their schools with a big group of staff, and in front of all their colleagues and students, and with their families, and walk into their classrooms or wherever they were at the moment and surprise them. And this kind of is a documentary of that day for both of them, and then I will invite Chris to come up to speak, which he's looking forward to, he can't wait. And Tekeisha cannot be here tonight. She is at a conference in St. Louis trying to stay warm, but I do have a quote from her that she thought was really important to read, but let's watch the videos first.
We are all here today to congratulate you on being the 2020 Principal Year for Indian River County.
It feels absolutely amazing to be recognized as the Principal of the Year for Indian River County. It's definitely unexpected, and I was, you know, completely surprised. It's very humbling, and it makes me feel really, really special. What I enjoy most is being in the classroom with the kids. Like, going in and not, you know, for the principal stuff, but just going in and sitting on the floor and reading with them, or practicing sight words, or multiplication facts, or asking them what they're learning and letting them tell me, and them being proud of what they know and what they can show me when I come into the classrooms, like giving them a chance to shine. That is my favorite part of being the principal. Liberty is such a special place to work. Like, you walk in the door and you just feel the good vibe, the good energy. I work with a phenomenal group of people, and not just, they're great teachers and great educators, we've got our support staff, and everyone's on the same page, but they are just good people, and that makes it such an awesome place to work.
She is easy to get along with. She's student-centered, so it makes it really easy to focus on the school and just our kids and what they need. I learn a lot from her. She's very thoughtful about teachers' time and what they need and how we can best support them. People feel good about coming to work, and I think it's just a happy place to be here because everybody knows that Mrs. Harris will support them. She's just awesome.
When my fifth grade students leave Liberty, I want them to leave knowing that they had a good solid foundation, not in just academics, but also in being a good global citizen, because that is the focus of our IB program. I want them to remember their learner profile traits, and to respect themselves and others and everything and everyone in their world.
We are here to congratulate you on being Indian River County's 2020 Assistant Principal of the Year.
It was really an amazing feeling. I believe that, you know, I worked with some amazing colleagues, many who are just as well-deserving of this honor, so I'm humbled and I'm grateful for everyone that thought that I was worthy of this honor.
His knowledge of curriculum instruction, and just being able to translate, not for the kids, but for the staff, what the expectation is in the classroom and how do we get students to learn is invaluable. But he just is very well-rounded as an administrator, but he is student-centered. That is the biggest thing. He's student-centered, high expectations, and a champion for our Wildcats.
I believe that all of our students have special gifts and talents. I believe that it's our job as educators to nurture those gifts, to help as many as we possibly can figure out what their gifts, what their talents are. In life, you know, building relationships is what's key. They are my passion. The kids at Oslo Middle are some of the best kids within our district, and being able to interact with them and being a part of their everyday life is an amazing feeling. What I do on a daily basis is impacting them in a positive way.
So, Tekeisha wanted me to share the quote that she provided since she couldn't be here tonight. "I have been blessed with the privilege to work in this district for 18 years, serving as Principal of Liberty for the last seven years. Liberty has taught me what a culture of caring and learning looks like. I have learned so much about how to be a principal, not only in title, but in everything that I say and do. It has been an amazing journey, and I wouldn't trade it for anything." So let's give Tekeisha a hand. And I had a crazy idea. I think she's watching the board meeting, so everyone, let's just wave to Tekeisha. And on three, we're gonna say, "Congrats, Tekeisha." Ready? One, two, three. Congrats, Tekeisha! Alright, so we miss her, but I know she wishes she could be here. And now, we do have our Assistant Principal of the Year here, Christopher Cummings. If you'd please come on up.
I do want to recognize my lovely wife, who is here celebrating with me tonight, Anitra Our youngest son, Isaiah, is here. We do have, I know he's like, "Please don't call me out, Dad." We have two other older children who both play basketball for Sebastian River High School, and they have games tonight, so excuse us after this, because if I don't get to my daughter's game, there's- daughter's game, there's going to be a problem at home. So, I want to start off by saying thank you. I am deeply humbled and honored to be selected Assistant Principal of the Year for the School District of Indian River County. I would like to express my gratitude to our honorable board members, to our superintendent, Dr. Moxley, to our incoming superintendent, Dr. Moore, and to all the assistant superintendents as well, and as well as all of our cabinet members. I truly believe that my fellow Assistant Principal colleagues are just as deserving of this honor as I am, which is why I'm humbled and honored to represent our collective passion and dedication to the students and community of Indian River County. The work we do as educators is an awesome opportunity to impact the lives of students and to help build capacity for our teacher leaders. John Buchanan, a novelist, once said, "The task of leadership is not to put greatness into humanity, but to elicit it, for the greatness is already there." I am grateful for the responsibility of nurturing the greatness from the students of Indian River County and watching them grow to achieve success beyond our imaginings. Thank you.
And we also have Beth Hofer here tonight, Principal of Oslo Middle, supporting her Assistant Principal. Thank you, Mrs. Hofer. Now, Tekeisha and Chris both just submitted their packets to state, right?
Yes.
Yes! I reminded him 100 times, they both just submitted their packets to state for consideration for the State Principal of the Year. So, fingers crossed for you guys, we know that you deserve it and we'll be informing everyone of the outcome of that. So, good luck. Next, we are recognizing our December Veteran of the Month and we're really excited because we worked with the Veterans Council for a long time on Veteran of the Month and we plan on continuing that again in the future, but we thought, we have so many veterans within the school district, we should start choosing veterans from that huge pool of people. So, for the past two months, we've recognized veterans within our school district and tonight we will be recognizing, and you can come on up, Mr. Michael Bills. And Michael works in our physical plant and he is a building automation specialist. He served in the U.S. Air Force from 1988 to 1992 and his duties were to maintain Air Force Base air conditioning and refrigeration systems for flight simulators in other buildings. So, if you can do it there, you could definitely do it here, right? You're totally qualified, okay. So, while in the 323 Civil Engineering Squadron, which I double-checked this for accuracy, the prime beef unit, okay? Our mission was to help set up and secure an operational airbase in hostile places in a very short amount of time. Your duty bases were Lackland Air Force Base and Shepherd Air Force Base in Texas and he was also assigned to Mather Air Force Base in California. Michael says that one of the most rewarding parts of his service while serving in California was when he was able to feed the hungry in the city of Sacramento as a part of service members helping the community. He says it was an honor to serve the country and now serve our community with the School District of Indian River County. His time in the service was once-in-a-lifetime opportunity and he's very thankful for it. That's a direct quote from Michael. So, thank you, we are very thankful for you, we're very blessed to have you on our team. And everyone, Mr. Michael Bills. for in November was the Veterans Council of Indian River County and we have a few members here tonight, would you all please come on up? So, if you're not familiar with Casual for a Cause, I'm sure most of us are, it's a day every month that we pre-select an organization that we do fundraising for and in exchange for a donation, students, teachers, and staff members, they dress casually, out of uniform, some of our high schools might have a hat day, something like that, in order to raise money for the selected organization. So, it was the Veterans Council in November and we are here to give them a check in the amount of $4,152.68. I gave them the real one earlier. All right, let's take a, we're going to have to get a little closer. Are we waiting for anyone else or okay? All right, just a little closer. Ready, one, two, and three. Thank you very much. And for those of you who don't know, we have a very close partnership with the Veterans Council in Indian River County. They're present on our campuses all the time, running veterans in the classroom programs that are tremendous for our students to have that reminder of what our veterans do and to remind them of special days that we recognize, whether it's Memorial Day or Veterans Day. They come in the classroom and they teach our students the true meaning of those days and why we celebrate and remind everyone how lucky and how blessed we are to live in the United States of America. So, thank you again, Veterans Council, thank you for being here tonight. Jim, I said you were going to get to say a few words, so why don't you come right back up? Trying to sneak off. Jim is the Executive Director of the Veterans Council of Indian River County.
Thank you. Wow, we're just humbled and we thank the school district for what you all just did for us. It's an honor and really, we appreciate it. Lieutenant Colonel Oates is back there, U.S. Army, he's the one retired, leads our teams with the veterans in the classroom and I know you honored an Air Force vet tonight, so I'm Air Force, I also have Colonel Nick DiMarco, he's Air Force, I also have Colonel Carlos Holcomb, he's Air Force, I also have Father Staff Sergeant Dave Newhart, he's also Air Force, and Colonel Patty Ryan, we love her, but she's Army. Uh-oh, there you go. So, go Army-Navy this weekend, but thank you so much for having us here and we look forward to working with you, Dr. Moore, in the future with our veterans in the classroom program and we just love our relationship and we love to teach our students here in this community all about patriotism and Americanism and what really is the cost to be free. So, thank you again.
Thank you. So, before we finish up presentations, I just want to recognize that tonight is Dr. Moxley's last board meeting. So, thank you, Dr. Moxley, for your service.
Thank you.
I'm not going to say too much because I don't want to get the waterworks going.
No, can't do that.
But thank you.
Thank you.
And we love you and you've been absolutely wonderful to work for and there's a reason why we call you our angel in St. Moxley and everything else because you're just the most pleasant human being to ever be around. So, just to sum that up for you, but thank you so much and can we just give Dr. Moxley a hand, please?
Thank you, thank you, thank you. That's very kind, thank you so very much, it is my honor.
And we honestly can't say enough, you know, she pulled us out of a tough place and did a lot of healing within this district and now she's passing the torch on to Dr. Moore and it's a very exciting time and a time of change and a lot of exciting things going on. And if you see on social media, there's going to be a new hashtag, a trend starting, SDIRC Stronger Together, and we are asking for the community's support. We need to start this off on a positive foot and we can't do that without the support of the community. And we want any time that you post about a teacher, a student, the school district, anything that shows that coming together makes us stronger, uniting makes us stronger, use that hashtag, SDIRC Stronger Together. Check out our Facebook and Twitter pages, we've started to use it to highlight our different community organizations that we're working with to become stronger together and we're just really looking forward to the future, so thank you for your support.
Okay, that concludes our presentations at this time, we're going to move on to our next portion of the agenda and that is citizen input. I do have one individual that has signed up for citizen input, Ms. And board members, she did give us a printout, if you have that. Welcome, thank you for being here.
Good evening, board members, superintendents, assistant superintendents, and citizens. I'm up here tonight just to speak about the annual report that is getting reported to the courts and just to state that after both the superintendent's workshop and the annual meeting, I celebrated the fact that the NAACP and the board was on the same page. During those meetings, the Equity Committee communicated that per the joint plan, the annual report would either be prepared and submitted by the Equity Committee or the school board may elect to retain the responsibility for preparing that report in collaboration with the NAACP to submit to the court by the second Monday in December regarding the status of the school district's progress in achieving full unitary status. I do not recall the board ever deciding publicly to prepare the report in collaboration with the NAACP, but nonetheless, I was presented with Ms. DiAgresta's draft of the annual report and it was extremely flawed. The report outlined the areas being monitored, but did not state progress of those areas. Instead, there were exhibits listed and the exhibits were described and attached as if the judge was to review those documents, analyze them, and determine for herself the status in those areas. Many of the exhibits were documents that the Equity Committee had deemed unacceptable. This draft appeared to inundate the court with unnecessary information without being precise and specific about the district's progress. It lacked transparency and it negated basically everything the Equity Committee had worked so diligently to accomplish. So, it made me wonder, like, do we really need an Equity Committee if the Equity Committee will be doing work, but then later when it's time to submit to the court, it is just overlooked? I do not understand why Ms. DiAgresta would suggest submitting a document because it was misleading to the court and the status of our district's progress was clear in the Equity Committee's presentation, yet it did not make it into the body of Ms. DiAgresta's proposed draft. Actually, very little of what the committee suggested was included in the draft. Since the board and the NAACP was to collaborate, I reached out to the NAACP's attorney and I asked that they amend the proposed draft to include the progress status findings the Equity Committee outlined in its presentation. And in the spirit of collaboration, they did so. I mean, it was disheartening to learn that Ms. DiAgresta and Mr. Rakowski rejected the NAACP's draft on the basis of it reiterating the Equity Committee's findings. Isn't that the purpose of the committee, to monitor the district's progress and those findings be communicated to the board and the court? Also, now, as a result of the board's attorneys refusing to collaborate with the NAACP, we may be headed to court and I just don't understand how we got here. I thought we all agreed to do us in the best interest of all students, I thought all parties wanted the same things, which was to see equity in our district and to see our district progress. I just don't understand why there's such resistance just off the basis of transparency with the court. I mean, it has also been stated numerous times that we do not have money for things such as raises, certain things with the desegregation order, welding, and other trades, but we have money for more litigation? No one wins in this situation but the attorneys. Attorneys are paid for conflict. The more conflicts arise, the more they make, but you know who will suffer from this unnecessary conflict? The students, the taxpayers, our district, your legacies. The good thing is that the attorney works for you, so you all have the authority tonight to resolve whatever unnecessary conflict that we're having right now. So, please do us in the best interest of the students, do what is necessary to establish trust between the board, the NAACP, the district, and our community. We all deserve to see progress without conflict and fighting. And, you know, I'm just wondering, where's this new era of collaboration that we celebrated? We had such great meetings and then I read this article and I reach out to the NAACP's attorney and I learn of the things that are happening and I'm just, I don't know, it's just disappointing and we were extremely hopeful and now, just with all this happening, it's kind of tainted the whole process that we had and we did have great, great input, great reaction from you all and I just ask, just give the community some clarity and please fix it. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. First off, I want to say thank you, Ms. Green, so since we are in this new era of actually getting to respond to public comment too. Thank you for that, thank you for the spirit in which your comments were made because they invited collaboration, where there are things that we still need to work on, I really appreciate the tone with which you presented those. I've had some other conversations wherein it's clear that we need to move forward in a way that puts the board and the NAACP together in a room to work through some of these conflicts. There's been so much harm done in the past that it's difficult to recover from that, so things continue to get heard in particular ways or reflect historical conflicts and I agree with you. Let's move forward in the spirit of collaboration, let's move forward in a way where we talk directly to each other, not through third parties to the degree possible. And in the new year, since this is our last meeting of the year, right? It is. I'm going to look forward to bringing that to our new superintendent and bringing forward ways in which I believe there are ways that we can do that, so thank you.
Okay. Any other comment?
Thank you for speaking. I look forward to Dr. Moore and understanding where we are with this and where we need to be and where we're going.
All right. We only had one individual signed up for citizen input, is that correct? We don't have any. Okay, thank you so much. All right, we're going to move on to consent agenda. At this time, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Second. Okay, who? Dr. Schiff?
Sure.
Justice?
Do you like to speak to? Don't we have to approve first or no?
No, we're discussion. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Sure. On the consent agenda tonight, we're approving something really special. The community came together, you know, social media can be a force for good or a force for ill, it can be a way to bring people together or it can be a way to disintegrate our community. I came across something on a social media site recently that was all about the community coming together to support this district, not only in light of what Mrs. Maddox was saying earlier about how do we come together. One of the things we'll be approving tonight is a donation from Vero Beach Neighborhood and I know they don't want to be mentioned by name, but I really want to do it. So, Joe, and I may not say this well, but Joe Semco and Danielle Weincoop, did I say that right? Put together an initiative that invited members of the community to contribute to cleaning up lunch debt from a number of our schools. We've seen a lot of that in the media lately and we've even seen kids stepping up to handle the lunch debt of other kids. This is who we are as a community, this is how we come together. When we take care of each other, when we take care of our kids, this is what we do. There are, I believe, six schools, do I have that right? I'm sorry, I should have looked this up.
Eleven.
Eleven schools. There are 11 schools whose lunch debt will now be wiped out as a result of this community effort, so thank you. And I'll be giving that to Mr. Fagan. Thank you for showing us what it looks like when we come together and we support each other. I appreciate, I acknowledge, and I'm grateful and humbled by what you've done. Thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely. Do you like to speak to?
I think Dr. Schiff said it beautifully. Thank you very much for your support.
Any further discussion on consent?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I think the reason why we all jumped to make the motion is because we wanted to say the same thing. And it's really nice to see that people are already getting on our wonderful SDIRC Stronger Together. So, thank you so much. And I know that the kids that are benefiting from this don't even know that, and that's the best way to give when people don't know. So, thank you.
Okay. I do have, this is under consent. I have, oh, go ahead, sorry.
Do you want to go first?
No, go ahead.
It's okay. I, when we approve consent, we often skip some of the items that are in there. And I know that, not to belabor a lot of points, but I hope that people don't skip over them, assuming that because we might appear to be doing that, that the items are not important. And there's one item on the consent agenda, that's the dual enrollment agreement with Treasure Coast Technical College. It's worthy to mention because students, many students unfortunately still don't know that there's an opportunity to enroll as a dual enrollment student with Treasure Coast Technical College. And it's in there, it's in the agenda, the agreement is there. But I do encourage parents, if you're interested, to please go on the website or call Treasure Coast Technical College, the principal, go for a tour. They have amazing courses there. It's definitely worth the effort to look into, and I just don't want to skip over that important notice for some people who, who may not have known.
Can I go back for a minute? I left out something really significant in that acknowledgement, which was the total amount that they raised, which was extraordinary. It was $3,687 put together by our community. So, thank you.
Okay. What I, item O, approval of agreement contract services with Aion Consulting, Mr. Fagan. I wanted to say thank you. We were, you were tasked with looking at, we were made a recommendation a year or so ago from our, one of our committees to look at fee base versus commission base. And so, you had went out and you had conducted the research, and you spent a lot of time on this, just based on looking at what that recommendation was. So, I just want to say thank you for looking at that. And, and it was a lot of work that you put into it, and I wanted to make sure you got that. You knew that, I appreciated that. Okay. So, let's move on. We have our discussion. So, let's go ahead and move to our vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five, zero. All right. This is unusual, but we actually do not have anything on our action agenda tonight. So, we're going to move into, move into our superintendent report. Dr. Moxley?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Ork. I have a few items that I want to highlight tonight. We had a wonderful student performance with some holiday songs that were absolutely outstanding and certainly get us into the holiday spirit. Their proud principal, Kim Garcia, is in the audience, and I wanted to recognize her. Thank you so much for allowing your students to come and entertain us tonight. And we have many activities that are going on throughout our district this week and next week. I know this weekend, I've heard all about the Prism concert that is coming up at Sebastian River High School that starts Thursday night, and I look forward to participating. And it's just wonderful to see our students perform, and we have so many talented students, both in the athletic arena, but also in the fine arts arena. And it's nice to see a district that really supports the arts as well as the academics and the athletic areas. So, we have something for all our students to excel in. I also want to highlight our Principal of the Year, Tekeisha Harris. That was such a fun day to go and recognize her. She had no idea that was coming. Her students were in the cafeteria waiting, and I do have to tell you that Tekeisha was one of the very first schools that I'd visited when I arrived here at the end of the school year, at the beginning of the summer. And she was, she's a very quiet, very high-powered principal, but she's very quiet about how she goes about her work, and she has a smile that will brighten up the, the world. So, that was very fun to meet her. And so, I went back on the first day of school, and Ms. Harris was Ms. Liberty. And she was the Statue of Liberty, and she was throughout the building, and what a great first day of school. So, I really want to commend Mrs. Harris, and she does represent all our outstanding principals here in our district. And Mr. Cummings, I know he was here tonight. We, we popped in at Oslo Middle School, and of course, he was very much engaged in curriculum planning with his team. And so, he's doing what he truly loves and excels in, and as that is in instruction and making sure that we have the highest quality of learning and instruction going on in our school. And he takes the lead in that. And so, I just am very proud of the accomplishments of our administrators, so I wanted to highlight them as well. Just a couple of business items, Board members, since this will be my last meeting, I want to let you know just a couple of things that we have, just logistics that we've done. I know at our organizational meeting, you did some committee appointments. You reappointed two district people to the Equity Committee. I did direct Mrs. Davis to reach out to the members of the Equity Committee to get some dates, because they need to do what their organizational meeting is, because they need to annually, you know, do their organizational, to get their work going for the next year, and also to do sunshine training. So, we do that with your Board committees as they're continuing with their work. The other item that I want to make sure that gets on the radar is that, as part of the organizational meeting, we actually had our annual financing corporation meeting, and that appointed me as your secretary. The Board chair obviously becomes the president. You will need to do that again in January. I realize that that's unusual, because once you do it, it's set for the year. But because of the change in the superintendent, you'll need to do that in one of your January meetings, to go ahead and appoint Dr. Moore to be the Secretary of your Financing Corporation. And then, January through May, no later than May, we need to file the annual report after you do that. Where, I was going to get it ready, but then, when you need to have that meeting, it will be done after that point. So, with, with that particular item. The only other data point that I wanted to bring up is that I was working with Mrs. Davis today as we were trying to prioritize some workloads and things like that. And, you know, Mrs. Davis does a variety of things. She is the Secretary to the Equity Committee. She also does our Board policies and all those updates, and among several other things. But one of, one of the, a third of her job is to process public records. And the volume of that has gotten pretty significant. And so, just some data points for that is, as of today, from July 1st, we've processed, or we, we've received 239 public records requests. November alone was 102. And so, we're at 45 for the month of December, and we're at December the 10th. So, the volume is getting to be more than just one person. I needed to put that on your radar, and Dr. Moore's, because, again, we need to process those in a timely manner. We need to be very focused on that. And I just believe that, at this point in time last year, we're already exceeded by 116 public records requests. So, the volume of that has gotten to a significant level, that I do believe the staffing of that needs to be looked at. And I just wanted to, you know, you may not know the data of that, and I just wanted to bring that to your attention there for further review. And the last thing I want to say to you is thank you to the Board for this opportunity. It has been a pleasure and an honor, and that's what I'm going to say tonight. So, thank you.
Okay. There are no discussions. We had discussion this, this afternoon. We're going to move on to school, school board member matters.
Start with me?
Yeah.
Okay. We all attended the Florida School Board Association's conference last week in Tampa. It was amazing. I think it was a great couple of days of learning. But what was wonderful is Dr. Moore was honored a little bit there because, and we felt very honored with our selection, because the guest, one of the guest speakers was Dr. Cavalo, who is the superintendent in Miami-Dade. He was an outstanding speaker. I think we all agree to that. And he, you know, mentioned what a great prize we were getting. And I felt great after that, because so many Board members from different, all over the state were coming up to us and saying, wow, that was great selection. And I also had a Board member that is going to be selecting a superintendent soon call me yesterday and say, wow, you guys did an awesome job with getting all the information that you got to make the choice that you, you made. So, I feel very good about our choice. I feel very sad about Dr. Moxley leaving. But I know that you're, you're going to do some great things in retirement. And so, for that, for that, I have a few quotes for you as you go into retirement. And so, I have three quotes for you. The first one is, "After climbing the mountain, you can finally enjoy the view." And I don't know who wrote that one, so that one's anonymous. "When you stop living at work and start working at living, it's called retirement." And the third one is from someone I love to quote, Eleanor Roosevelt. "A woman is like a teabag. You never know how strong it is until it's in hot water." And you have really been strong through hot water, so we appreciate that.
Thank you.
And as I welcome Dr. Moore, I have three quotes for you as you start. The first one, "Goals are dreams with a purpose." Think about that one, because you've talked about how important that is. The second one, "It doesn't matter who you are, where you come from. The ability to triumph begins with you, always." And that's from Oprah Winfrey. And the third one is from Eleanor Roosevelt. "Do one thing every day that scares you." Think about that. So, I know you will do some great things, hopefully not scare the Board too much. But I look forward to seeing the excitement that you bring to us, and also knowing that we're going to be stronger together. So, thank you.
Thank you. That was nice. Go ahead.
Some time ago, I brought forth the Crossing Guard of the Year suggestion for anyone in the community, or anyone who was, who had your favorite crossing guard. And children know exactly who they are. But the deadline for that is December 31st, so I just wanted to make a second reminder and just let people know that, that that is coming up. Last week during FSBA, I really need to say this. Last week during FSBA, I took one of the white fleet cars from the district to drive to the, to the conference, and I had mechanical problems. There was, you know, the check engine light, and some other light came on. And through communicating with Mrs. Esplin, our Executive Secretary Administrative Assistant, and she reached over to the mechanical, the mechanics here in, in our district. Somehow or another, I don't even know how this happened, but the mechanics here, Mrs. Esplin, correct me if I get any of this wrong, they contacted Hillsborough County's mechanics, school district mechanics. And within like 20 minutes, a mechanic from their district met me at the hotel during the conference. So, I thought that was wonderful, and I met him, and I tell you, he was just the sweetest gentleman. His name was, is Paul Vilches. I don't know if he's watching. Paul Vilches. And I need to give him really the accolades that he deserves, because not only was he professional, but he was incredibly helpful and very, very concerned that the car would be well enough for me to be able to get, come back to Vero. That was at the beginning of the week. The car worked fine. On the last day of the conference on Friday, the car, the car light came on again. So, I had his, you know, information. I text him again, and he, within like five minutes, you know, he's, no problem, I will be there. He did whatever he did, reset the computer. The whole point is, I didn't know that there was this hospitality and professionalism from county to county with mechanics for this sort of issue. And if you think about it, he said, you know, children travel on trips all the time, and the school buses unfortunately have mechanical issues. And so, there is this code of professionalism and hospitality that one district will offer to another district to fix the car or the bus, or to offer services when it's needed. And of course, this was my introduction to something like this. I just thought it was incredible. I wanted to recognize him publicly. I wanted to thank Hillsborough County School District for offering his services out of his day to come and help us, or me rather, in this situation. So, I just thought it was odd, and yet, a blessing all at the same time. So, it was, it's worthy of mentioning, and I just wanted to thank them publicly for, for that. I also want to thank Dr. Moxley. Oh, my God. I don't know what it is.
It's been my pleasure and honor, and I thank you.
I don't know what it is. Just the thought of it.
Thank you.
And Dr. Moore, thank you for being here and, and filling the shoes of a well-needed and well-deserved position. It is an honor to have you here. And lastly, Merry Christmas, everybody. May you all have a very, very happy New Year.
Apparently, it's not just doctors who have professional courtesy. Apparently, school district bus mechanics do that, too. I don't have a lot to add. I'm looking forward to Prism. We were all at FSBA last week. What's significant about that is it's the second year in a row that the school board has gone together, which means that we are going out to learn how to be a better board in a way that hasn't happened in the past. And while sometimes we may get, I was going to say criticism, then I was going to say flack, whatever it is. There are issues about whether or not the Board should spend limited resources on its own professional development. And I want to say that I learn more, I gain more, I learn from other districts at that, as I think we all do, in a way that is significant to the well-functioning and the direction and leadership of this district. So, I'm grateful to be able to attend that. I'm grateful to the district for, that we now support that, because it makes an enormous difference for us to be able to do our jobs. We come into this job with very little experience or training in how to be a Board member. And the place that you go to get that is, is Florida School Boards Association. So, I'm grateful for that, and I'm grateful for the time that we get to spend together building our own relationships. No, we don't talk about school board business, just for the record, but we do actually get to build our own relationships. And to be a functioning team, we need to be able to do that. So, I'm grateful for that. And I, I, I said my closing speech to Dr. Moxley last week, so I won't, I won't make us all suffer through that again, at least not at this moment. Welcome, Dr. Moore. And what I want to say publicly about that is transitions are not easy. Things may get challenging before they get better, because we have to do some really hard work. For us to be the district that we are capable of being, that we know we can be, and that we should be, it's going to take some hard work. And sometimes, when that happens, it's challenging, people don't like it. I know that's going to happen. I know there are going to be moments that are really difficult. What I also know is that we have to go through those in order to get where we're going next. So, I actually welcome that. There are moments I won't welcome it. But I welcome that we will do the hard work of transitioning into the extraordinary district I know we have the capacity to be. And I, for one, am really looking forward to that. So, on that note, thank you. Happy holidays. Have a wonderful break when you get there after your exams, your tests for the end of the year. And I look forward to seeing everybody in the new year.
Thank you, Mrs. Ork. Yeah, I do want to say thank you.
So I actually welcome that. There are moments I won't welcome it. But I welcome that we will do the hard work of transitioning into the extraordinary district. I know we have the capacity to be. And I, for one, am really looking forward to that. So on that note, thank you. Happy holidays. Have a wonderful break when you get there after your exams, your tests for the end of the year. And I look forward to seeing everybody in the new year.
Thank you, Mrs. Zork. Yeah, I, I do want to say thank you to my fellow board members and the taxpayers of Indian River County for supporting us going to FSBA. It was a wonderful experience learning and growing together, and I think it will help us to function better as a board. And I look forward to going through master board training with, with the board members.
Do you want to wait? Why are our students are leaving?
I think I might have signed some of their slips. They should come back. I don't know. Call some teachers. Dr. Moxley, when we were going through the process of searching for an interim, I called some of your board members, and I spoke with them. And one gentleman in particular, I had grown to have a good respect for in his opinion, and he said, you will, he had been in business a long time. And he said, "You will learn how to be a better board member by working with Dr. Moxley." And I can say without a doubt that is true. So thank you for helping me to be better at this job. It's been a pleasure working with you and learning how to grow and work together as a board with you. I look forward to working with Dr. Moore with this board. I think we're going to do some incredible things, and it's an exciting time to be a part of the school district of Indian River County. I hope all of our students do well on your exams, go home and study. And I hope everyone has a wonderful Christmas or Hanukkah, or whatever, however you celebrate this holiday season, may you celebrate with love and family. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
How many charter students we have in the audience tonight?
That are still left.
Yeah. Well, thank you so much for being here. I know that this is part of your volunteer hours, that you have to come out and go to a public meeting, and I appreciate you for picking the school board meeting. So like Mrs. Justice said, we really wish you a, a nice holiday break, and we, we hope that you do well on your exams. And the purpose of moving the school calendar back like we have in the beginning of August was so that you could take your exams before the holiday break, so that you don't have to spend your holiday break studying for your exams and coming back in January, the first week of January, and taking those, and then that. So I hope that you get to enjoy your, your break and be safe. We have so many fabulous activities going on over the next couple of weeks. We have the Prism, we have the bands and the orchestra. So I just encourage the public to just go on our calendars and take a look. And I know, for example, over at Sebastian River High School this weekend, we have the Harlem Globetrotters. I remember seeing them when I was younger, and just, I'm sure it's not the same guys, but it is just a...
Is there a geriatric version?
It was the same guys.
Senior league of the Globetrotters, yeah.
If it was the same guys, I believe the tickets would be cheaper, but, but anyways, we have a, a lot of really spectacular activities going on over the next couple of weeks at our school. So take a look on the calendar. I know Mrs. Maddox does a really good job in putting those up on our district website. I also want to say, and I'm going to keep it short, this month has been, it's, over the past couple of weeks, kind of a whirlwind here. We are, as a school district, we're gaining a transformational leader with Dr. Moore. I'm crying because I'm happy, okay? But also, as a school district, we're losing a fabulous superintendent and a leader that I've learned so much from, so... But the good news is, I feel like I've gained a lifelong friend with Dr. Moxley. And, and it's just been an honor to know you and work with you, and I look forward to our coffee and tea as I travel up to St. Augustine.
Absolutely.
So, so that's all I'm going to say. So let's move on to superintendent closing. Do you have anything?
Sure, sure. I just want to say, it has been a very quick six, six and a half months. It's hard to believe that, that the time has gone by. And, you know, we've really learned together, we've laughed together, we've grown together, and we've worked hard together.
And we've cried together.
Yes, we do.
I haven't cried yet.
We do, we do, we do. But you know, that's just a sign of the connections that we've, you know, been able to come together seamlessly as a, as a leadership team. And I think that's really important, that we've been able to do that and do the work of the district, because the young people that are sitting in our audience, they're representing the 17,000 students that we have in our system, and that's why we do what we do every day. And you have remained very focused, that our number one reason for what we do is right here. And that's why we all do this work. And so I, I thank you so much for your comments. I value you as a board. I have appreciated the leadership into getting to know you as a board and to work with you individually. That has been just, you know, it's been a real honor for me and a real gift, and I thank you every day for that. I know that, you know, after 38 years of work in the, in the profession, you know, I didn't think that I would come back to a school district again, and you gave me an opportunity to do that, and I thank you so much. And I will see each one of you before I leave on the 19th, so thank you very much.
Dr. Moore? We're so glad you're here. You are going to do amazing work here. You are inheriting a, just a lovely district, a real gem, and it's the best of the best. So amazing things are in store for Indian River. Thank you.
Now you're going to make me cry.
Dr. Moxley, I know you are superintendent right now, but do you mind if I ask Dr. Moore if he would like to speak at this time?
Crying now, but I'll, I'll be crying on the 20th when Dr. Moxley is not in her office. And to keep the theme consistent and speaking through the character and quality of who Dr. Moxley is, I think when you look at someone's transition, when they're leaving something, they know they're on their way out, they can just kind of take their foot off the gas pedal. For the time that I've been here, transitioning and trying to learn as much as possible, she remains in her office next door, solving problems, acting in the best interest of children, while at the same time, always willing to come back at the end of the day, or any minute she may have in the breaks of, of the schedules that we have, to sit and just come in and completely overwhelm me. So I can't thank you enough on behalf of this board, on behalf of this community. The commitment that you gave, coming, leaving your family, leaving your husband, to come here and to be in service of this community, really speaks to who you are as a person. And you are truly leaving this district in a better place than you found it. And every single person, whether it was through the interview process, or being here over the course of the last week and a half, basically, all say the same thing. So thank you so much for what you have done, not for me, but what you've done for this district. Absolutely a true woman of character. Thank you.
All right. All right, so it is 7:08, and we're going to adjourn the meeting.